...by Reverend Lenir Wood, Associate Pastor, Covenant Presbyterian Church, and remains standing for the pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence following the pledge in honor of Senator John McCain.
Let's bow our heads in prayer. Lord, we seek your presence this morning. Ask that you would bring wisdom to this gathering that through these women and men, leaders and servants. You would work for your glory and the good of our city, Mobile. Bring peace, bring reconciliation, bring friendship, bring humility. We ask these things in the name of Jesus Christ, who brings all good gifts through his cross. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to observe now in a moment of silence for Senator John McCain. What a great American. When you look at his biography, when you look at his life, he really led a life of service. And this last year where he fought so valiantly with cancer, he's an inspiration to all of us. This country has been made better by Senator John McCain. If we could, let's observe that moment of silence.
Here.
Councilmember Richardson.
Here.
Councilmember Small.
Present.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Dave.
Here.
Councilmember Rich.
Here.
Councilmember Gregory.
Here.
Statement of rules.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
It's so good to see each and every one of you and your interest in municipal government. The rules of the council are quite simple. Whereas first that you silence or turn off all electronic devices before or upon entering the meeting, any person desiring to address the council must first sign in indicating the resolution, ordinance, appeal, or public hearing agenda item before entering the meeting. When addressing the council, we ask that the speaker clearly state both your name and your address. Any person desiring to speak to the council on a non-agenda item is asked to contact the city clerk's office no later than 2:00 p.m. on the Thursday prior to the council meeting you'd like to speak. The subject that you would sign in to speak on must be pertinent to City of Mobile business. Anyone who has not given that proper notice to the city clerk's office will not be allowed to address the council. Each speaker is granted five minutes to address the council. A bell will sound to indicate the end of four minutes. One minute will remain for summarizing, and the second bell indicates that all of your time has expired. When addressing the council, there is to be no personal address to any individual council member. All statements and comments are to be made to me, the chair, who will recognize any council member who wishes to respond. To maintain decorum, there will be no undue applause and/or public outcry allowed. And we ask kindly that you would respect and observe these rules, and we thank you for your interest in your local government. Madam City Clerk?
Approval of minutes of August 21st. Sumoog.
Second.
Properly motioned as second in the discussion. If not, all in favor? Opposed? Minus approved.
Communications from the mayor's office.
Mr. Vice President, the mayor is at a state court authority meeting this morning, so he could not be with us, but he asked me to pass along a couple of comments to the council and to the citizens. The first is that concerns the civic center and the schedule for the RFP process that we've talked about in the past. As you know, the RFQ and RFP process has been months in the making, but during September, the RFQ will be released to interested parties, potential developers. A short list then of qualified candidates with capacity and experience will then have released to them an RFP, or a request for proposals. As you know, the city has worked with civic leaders and citizens, those with interest in the civic center, to learn about their concerns and dreams about the future of this property. And their input will, of course, be incorporated into the RFQ and later the RFP. The goal is to attract an experienced, qualified, interested developer. They will not have a prescribed course of action, but rather we're looking for original thought as to the redevelopment of the site. Whether that means a new civic center, whether that means a rehabilitated civic center, will be among the options that those developers will be expected to explore. Also, Mr. Vice President, members of the council chief, Jeremy Lamy, would like to introduce the firefighter of the month.
Good morning.
Good morning.
It's an honor and a privilege for me to be up here today to recognize one of our own. They do not do it for the accolades and the attention, but they certainly appreciate the fact that we can get up here and honor one of our own. Today is a unique situation here. We've got firefighter Pat Henderson. He serves over at Station 16, located off the DIP off of Maryville Street, and he's a great example of what it means to be a firefighter for the city of Mobile. Since I've been with this job over 15 years, I've never seen someone get the Medal of Valor. And not only did he get the firefighter of the month, but he's going to receive the Medal of Valor from our department today, which basically says, "For whose actions during an emergency incident did knowingly put themselves at high risk of death or personal injury for the purpose of removing another person from harm's way." Firefighter Henderson, if you all remember the news story where we had that gentleman that drowned in Dog River. Firefighter Henderson was one of the first ones on scene that immediately, we do typically have safety precautions that we're looking at because we try to protect our own as well when they're going into harm's way, but he immediately made a decision to jump off into Dog River, as murky as it is, and dive on his own in search of the victim. So, we just wanted to recognize him today and thank him for his service. So, we appreciate it. We really appreciate you all giving us the opportunity to present that today. Thank you very much.
Excuse me, before Danny comes up, I'm sorry. I didn't want to interrupt the medal recipient, but I do have a question about the RFQ that will be going out. To your knowledge, does that have guidelines on returning some public space on that acreage?
Well, Madam Councilwoman, that is certainly one of the options that is being looked at. One of the limiting factors with the civic center as currently laid out is that 22 acres are required for the buildings and for the parking. We think that perhaps with parking structures that there will be opportunity for mixed use, additional development.
Well, I understand the mixed use part, but is there a component of their guidelines having to produce public space back into their project, or is that also completely opened as well?
Well, I will say that the guidelines with respect to the RFQ are not very precise. That is mostly an invitation that they present us with their experience and capacity in developments of projects of this magnitude. But certainly, the preservation of our public space is probably the central feature of what we hope happens to that site.
But it's not necessarily what initially, when you line up, the ones that have the capacity will be required to return under their capacity?
Well, they all saw, they will all have seen the initial work that was done with the options that were presented to the community and to them, and each one of those options has either the maintenance of the public facility or the rebuild of a public facility on a different portion of the site. So, I think they would be shortsighted if they did not take that as an indication that that is a central feature of what the public wants.
Can the council see copies of the RFQ that's being sent out, or is that privileged only through the administration? What is the guidance on that?
That is a good question to which I do not have an answer as far as privilege goes. That may be something that we can ask Planning and Development to address with you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Danny Cordy.
Sorry, Mr. Cordy.
No problem, Ms. Rich, no problem. Good morning, Mr. Vice President, city council members, the mayor and his staff, and ladies and gentlemen. For the record, I'm Danny Cordy, Executive Director of the Mobile Sports Authority, and we're at 301 Government Street. Every now and then, I like to come in front of you to bring you an update of what's been going on with the Mobile Sports Authority, because your investment and your support of what we do is very important. As a sports tourism arm for the city and county of Mobile, we're proud to represent you as we continue to work bringing these visiting sporting events to the Mobile area and hence the economic impact with it. And for that, as I mentioned, I want to thank you for the confidence you've shown in us. As an update, with a little more than a month to go, our fiscal year is the same as the city and the county, the October 1 fiscal year. With a little more than a month to go in our fiscal '18 year, the MSA has attracted, hosted, and/or supported 26 sporting events, which have generated an estimated $15.5 million to the economic impact to the Mobile area. And that's something we're real proud of. What's kind of unique about this, those 26 events involve 22 different sports, so it's not just one sport. It's sports like gymnastics, volleyball, basketball, lacrosse, believe it or not, track and field, road running soccer, and college football, just to name a few of those 22. Also, one of the things that we like to do, or one of the goals, is that we try to have a mix of repeat events and new events. Out of those 26 events, and again, we have a few more events to go before the end of the fiscal year, 15 of those 26 events, or either first or second-time events for Mobile, will of course the remaining 11 be annually held. And again, there are a few more events to come, one I'm going to talk about in just a second. And with what we have on the calendar right now, between now and May of 2019, we already have another 21 confirmed sporting events coming to the Mobile area, matching up with the facilities that we do have. One event I want to mention, which is really going to be our largest event coming up next month, is the, on September 22nd, is the First Annual Gulf Coast Challenge powered by the Mobile Sports Authority. This is an HBCU football game between Southern University Jaguars and the Alabama A&amp;M Bulldogs. If you remember, the last few years, we had run the Fifth Quarter Classic with an outside promoter, but we felt like to really take this game to where it needs to be, we needed to engage some new producers promoters, which we did this year. And I'm going to say that their group is really passionate, fired up, they're organized, and we're really impressed so far with what they've done. Of course, we're working very closely with them on the operation of their game. But of course, with a football game, you've got to have the bands. The Human Jukebox Marching Band of Southern University will be here battling with the marching maroon and white from Alabama A&amp;M. If nothing else, that's going to be entertaining as much as the game itself. Kickoff will be 4:00 p.m. at Lad People Stadium on September 22nd, and if you allow me a little commercial, tickets are on sale on thegulfcoastchallenge.com, also Area Piggly Wiggly's, Northside Check Exchange, and C&amp;T Package Store. The package stores. The one good thing, our game week starts on that Wednesday before. We have events Wednesday, starting with a college fair, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and through the game on Saturday. So, we have a lot of events. Hopefully, we'll see a lot of people in town that week and weekend. And again, we're looking at this as our largest event we've ever put on, hopefully larger than the two previous Fifth Quarter Classics. So, really, that's a brief update of what's going on with the Mobile Sports Authority as we continue to grow and market our unique area to those visiting event owners, as well as to help create, grow, and support even some of our own homegrown events. Again, I'd like to thank you for all your support, and please feel free to contact us if you have any questions, comments, thoughts, suggestions about anything we do. So, thank you again, and I hope you guys have a good week. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Monthly finance report.
Good morning.
As you know, the budget was delivered to you last Monday, and thank you for scheduling the September 4th public hearing on the budget. I think that may be a little bit earlier than usual, and that is good news. As we get into budget time, I wanted to spotlight the revenue side of the budget. You know, we've had discussions about some flatness in revenue and effects of e-commerce, and we actually have four bright spots, I think, on the revenue side. One is sales tax. Towards the latter part of the current year, we started to see some improvement in our sales tax revenues, enough that we could predict about a $4 million increase in sales tax. At the same time, our SSUT can be projected to be much more robust than it has been this year. We're expected, I think we had budgeted for this year $200,000 in simplified seller's use tax, and because primarily of the changes that were made in the last regular session of the legislature, which you supported unanimously, those revenues are projected to be $2 million for 2019, and that is kind of a conservative number because we don't know fully what to expect. So, that has been really a nice shot in the arm for the budget. We've also seen about a $1 million increase projected for property taxes. That is nothing that we've done, that's simply a product of the annual reassessment of property for ad valorem tax purposes that the county does. I think a very bright part of the revenue profile is the increase in lodgings tax. We're looking currently at about a 26% increase in 2018 over 2017, and we're projecting that forward into 2019. I think that's a tribute really to David Clark and the efforts of Visit Mobile. And I think as the Tourism Improvement District that you have all supported is legislated into action at the next regular session of the legislature, they're going to have more assets to put into the marketing for tourism, and that will probably be reflected in tourism numbers improving. This year, total tourism numbers are about 3.4 million, which is a 400,000 increase from just two years ago. So, they've done a very good job, and much of that is a product of Visit Mobile's focus on the leisure traveler as opposed to just the conventions that have been really the target in the past. So, we look forward to sharing other information with you on the 4th, and again, thank you for scheduling that. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Yes, sir. We appreciate it. Any questions of Mr. West? Thank you.
Adoption of the agenda.
Sumoog.
Second.
Properly moved as second in the discussion. Not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Appeals. We have requests for wave of noise ordinance on September 8th on Moffett Road, October 27th on Pembetta Street, September 1st on Ziegler Boulevard, and September 1st on Magoo Drive.
Sumoog.
Second.
Properly moved as second in the discussion. Am not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Public hearings. Today is a public hearing to determine if structures at 2503 Chestang Avenue, 928 Lincoln Avenue, 358 Robbins Street are public nuisances and ordering them demolished.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak in any of these public hearings relative to these addresses, these properties? Not a public hearing is spoken.
Public hearing to approve the application of Matthew Kelly doing business as Gulf Coast Pedal Tours for certificate of public convenience and necessity to operate a quadricycle tour service.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak at this particular public hearing with the Matthew Kelly Pedal Tours? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Mackenzie Kelly, and our address is 320 Stanton Road. I'm here to speak on behalf of Gulf Coast Pedal Tours. Some of you may have been communicating with my husband, his Matthew Kelly, who is unfortunately out of town for business. We are very excited to bring Mobile a unique experience that has been done in states all over the U.S. Gulf Coast Pedal Tours hopes to increase downtown engagement by showing locals and tourists alike why Mobile consistently receives national attention for our local pubs, bars, eateries, and of course its deep historical roots. We will offer two-hour tours that will consist of stops at downtown venues, plus a historical tour that'll show off many of Mobile's historic landmarks. Through our partnerships with Serta Brewing, OK Bike Shop, The Breakyard, Saddle Up Saloon, Montego's, O'Dayley's Irish Pub, and many others, we will take our patrons to places that they may have never been to before, and our pedal wagon is equipped with seats for up to 12, and will offer both private and public tours to give everyone an opportunity to experience Mobile and everything that we've really come to love here in Mobile. For safety purposes, our tours will be manned by two of our staff members. One person sits in the middle and controls the speed, brakes, turn signals, and navigation of the pedal wagon. The other staff member will watch the riders to ensure that nobody stands while the vehicle's in motion or attempts to get off the wagon while it is in motion. We're equipped with headlights, turn signals, rear running lights, brake lights, and a reflective safety placard. And most importantly, we also have an electric motor assist that propels the vehicle, which we find to be a very important asset in the event that we need to quickly move the vehicle out of the street for any purpose whatsoever. Our intention is to operate in and around the entertainment district, avoiding streets with a speed limit greater than 35 miles per hour while we're loaded with passengers. We are fully aware of the Mobile City Code and its governance for vehicles for hire, as well as for vehicles for hire operating in the entertainment district of Mobile. We have received a huge positive feedback through our initial Facebook campaign, and have had countless groups that include local businesses, hospitals, mystic societies, as well as people from outside the Mobile area that are already really excited about booking tours once we are approved. We believe that this will be a very positive contribution to the downtown area and will increase traffic for our partners while giving our patrons a very unique way to see downtown Mobile. We are very anxious and excited to start this new business and can't wait to see what it brings for the tourism of Mobile. Thank you so much for having me here today to speak with you, and I would be happy to answer any kind of questions that you may have.
Vice President.
Small.
Yeah, I think this is a very exciting venture that you all about to take on. If I'm not mistaken, Nashville, Tennessee, has the same exact thing. I do know, when I visit Nashville, that when I'm downtown, I see the group there drinking and playing music. So, with this bicycle, will they be playing music also? Or if so, we know we have a noise ordinance, right?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We are fully aware of the noise ordinance, and we will fully comply with the noise ordinance that the city has. We will be having a good time. We will show people, you know, that Mobile is very entertaining, that we enjoy the tourism, but we will comply within the city ordinances as well.
Yes, this would be a great thing, especially during Mardi Gras, and I wish you and your husband very much success in this. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Mr. President.
Mr. Richardson.
I would like to also congratulate you all for coming forward with this exciting new business. I want you to know that this business is coming from the heart of District 1, 320 Stanton Road is in the heart of District 1. In fact, we just opened up this morning Dunkin' Donuts on the corner of Mobile and Bourbon Boulevard and Sprinkle Avenue, and then you getting ready to lunch. District 1 is on fire.
On fire.
I want you to know that you come on downtown and do good.
Yes, sir.
Right out of District 1.
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
Well, Mrs. Kelly, I've been in communication with your husband. I'm excited as well about having this new transportation amenity, and I want to just note that they may be located in District 1, but they will be working in District 2. The excitement is in District 2.
We are crossing.
And so, we're happy to have you all. This is a great idea that you all have come forward with, and it just adds to all of the other things that we've seen, Lime Bike, the bicycles, it's just a lot of vibrance in our city. This is going to add to it, so thank you for coming forward with this idea.
Thank you so much.
Mr. President, just one more.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Matthews, I want you to know that Midtown has grown exponentially. It's exciting we're bringing on new businesses almost every week, and new attractions, and that after you get settled down, I'd like for you to consider creating a Midtown 2.
Okay.
Get that in.
Sure, absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council. Fred Wolf.
I'm thankful for the opportunity to speak to you council members. I want to express my appreciation for you and for the work you do in our city. You have a difficult job, but I believe that you're committed to it and that you're doing a good job, and thankful for you. I want to address something that's heavy on the heart of many, many Mobileans.
Pastor Wolf, if you could give us your name and address for the record, if you don't mind.
I don't mind at all.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
It's Fred Wolf at 3440 Morgan Court, Mobile, Alabama, 366-95.
All right.
All right. So, I want to address something that's very important to a great number of people in Mobile, and that is the coming of the Drag Queen Story Hour at the public library. I've got about two things I want to say about that, but in preparation for it, let me say that back in the late '70s or early '80s, Ishmael Jeffrey filed a suit against the city of Mobile, or the public school system, that stopped the reading of the Bible and prayer in that school. Well, the people of Mobile rallied together. We took it to court, and won the suit, and the suit was this, that humanism is a religion. Now, it's basically humanism that is taught in our colleges and universities. Most of the books that are in the public schools have a humanistic thing, and humanism is a kind name for atheism. Humanism makes this, and Humanist Manifesto, one. No deity will save us. We must save ourselves. So, basically, they're saying we just need to get God out of the way. But the second thing that goes into this Drag Queen Story Hour is the fact that in this thing, in the manifesto number two, it says that there are no moral absolutes. What is, the whole manifesto is based on situational ethics. The situation determines if it's right. The situation determines it's wrong. It goes on to say that any sexual activity between two consenting adults is certainly in bounds, and nothing is out of bounds. Now, it all started there. Now, here we are in Mobile, having a man dressed up as a woman coming to address our children, ages three through eight, on a lifestyle that is totally not acceptable. Now, I know they're talking about diversity and embracing the whole culture, but it's much deeper than that. And one of the books that the drag queen is going to read from, Stella Keeps Her Family, it's a story about a little girl that has two fathers, and she has to decide which father she's going to take to the event at school. Now, that's subtle, but the little boy goes, the little girl goes, "Mom, why'd you have two fathers?" "Because I guess they were married." "Well, I didn't know two men married." And so, it is a subtle thing. Let me say, I know I have limited time. It all started, now remember where this started, San Francisco, right after the same-sex marriage approval was voted, a drag queen named Little Miss Fancy decided to plan these things and had a movement and an organization to have Story Queen Hour, Drag Queen Story Hours all across the United States. They've been in 40 states, most of them are very liberal states, but now they're meeting a great deal of opposition, not only in Mobile, but in Houston and Louisiana. a great deal of opposition, not only in Mobile, but in Houston and Louisiana. Number one, it is wrong to use a public forum like the library for this Drag Queen Story Hour because the library gives it credibility. In other words, the library's the same place. The library's a good place for children. It's a good place to bring your family, but the library is a public facility and it gives it credibility. Number two, they do have an agenda. It's a nationwide agenda, and it is to say the alternate lifestyle, LBGQ, is an acceptable lifestyle, and that we need to approve it, and we need to be for it and not be against it. Well, we cannot do that. The Bible teaches clearly that sex outside of marriage, except sex outside the union of a man and a woman in the covenant of marriage is a sin. And so, here we are, they're going to teach our children about a lifestyle that is sinful, and so therefore we say, well, what do we do? Silence means agreement. So we come to say that this is not an acceptable lifestyle. And in God's Word, it says it's a sin. I know I have about 30 seconds, so... Has the bell rang one time?
Yes.
All right, okay. Don't take those seconds off right there. If I was driving down the road and I saw that the bridge was out, and I'd say, well, you know, if they drive off in that gutted cliff, they're going to die. But I said, well, you know, but they'll stop. They'll stop. So I just pulled over the side of the road and did nothing. And so, here comes a car going about 80 miles an hour and runs off the bridge and thinks, hey, let me say this, I should have warned him of the danger.
Pastor.
I should have warned him of the danger, and the failure not to warn them, I did not get to do.
Pastor.
So I'm just warning us of the danger.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you. And I just want to remind all of our speakers, let's observe the bell. You know, Pastor Wolf is a highly respected pastor. I hate to cut him off, but we do have these rules, and so if we could, let's observe the rules, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
My name is Lisa Strong. I know I need to give my address.
Yes, ma'am.
9810 Potomac Ridge Drive. My name is Lisa Strong. I am a mother, a sister, and a wife, and a native Mobilean most of my life. The reason I'm here today is because of a matter that's very heavy on my heart. Upon finding out about the Drag Queen Story Hour at the Mobile Public Library, I became greatly disturbed and saddened. I thought to myself, the pastors will speak out, the politicians will speak out, somebody will speak out, somebody will do something. The next morning, I read a favorite devotion of mine. It's a woman's devotion. It paraphrases Psalm 101 and Psalm 10. I'd like to read a portion of it now. It said, "My daughter, guard against the wickedness that is flooding this present day with obscenities and sexual filth." It's taken out of Psalms from the beginning of time, very relevant to today's standards. It said, "Take a stand," and I quote from my children, "because they are helpless and weak." So you see, after reading this, I had no other choice than to take a stand. We all have choices. We're a world of choices. We're flooded with choices. But today, I have chosen to take a stand for the children of Mobile County. I come from a family of proud Americans. My grandfather came over to Ellis Island from Italy. He became an American citizen and fought in World War I. He received the Purple Heart. My father, my father fought in World War II and was on the Missouri when they signed the surrender that ended that war. My nephew is a Marine, once a Marine, always a Marine. He fought two tours in Iraq, and I stand before you proudly to say they both came home safely, thank God. I've always been taught in life that you have to pick your battles. And so today, city council, I graciously stand before you that I have picked my battle. And it's not a battle of hatred, and it's not a battle of small-mindedness. It's just time to take a stand for God. So I just happen to be an American Christian woman who is tired of seeing a systematic removal of everything that is moral that our founding fathers have fought for. So as I stand before you here with legs shaking, just as a mother and just as a wife, I have no grandchildren yet, but my family won't be affected by this, but scores of children will. But just, and excuse me, but as I stand here before you and say, we've always been a nation of diversity since the beginning of this great nation, but we've also been a nation formed under Almighty God. So as I stand before you today, members of the city council, on behalf of our most vulnerable citizens of Mobile County, specifically children ages three to eight years old, I plead on your behalf, each of you, to examine your hearts and examine your mind and do what's right for the children of this city. In closing, I'm reminded of a song by Matthew West, and the song, I would encourage you to listen to it, is called "Do Something." Prior to coming here, the song played over and over in my mind, and I'd like to read in closing what it says, and it says, "If not me, then who?" And God said, "I created you." And so I guess this last minute, I'll just wing it, if that's okay. Thank you for your time. What an honor and privilege to stand before you, and I mean it sincerely. We live in the greatest nation on earth. To have a privilege to be just a regular citizen that lives out in West Mobile and to be able to come here and speak to you and share the convictions of my heart, I pray that each of you, I know you are people of conviction, each of you, and I pray that you will stand for the convictions of your heart. Thank you so much. I appreciate your time.
That's right. Thank you. I definitely think, ladies and gentlemen, we have with us Mr. Scott Kenny. Mr. Kenny is the executive director of our Mobile Public Library System. I want to make it clear, I'm sure some of you are at the county commission meeting on yesterday, and we thank you for coming here today to express your sentiments. These are decisions that this administration nor the council had a hand in. We don't necessarily have purview over, but the gentleman that does happens to be here. And we're going to ask Mr. Kenny, if you don't mind, would you come and just express any sentiments you would like to express from the library system, the library board, relative to what we've heard here today?
I'm Scott Kenny, the executive director of the Mobile Public Library. Do you need my address as an employee?
Yes, sir, if you don't mind.
My address is 5317 Isabel Way South, Mobile, Alabama. I'm employed by the library board of directors that is appointed by the city council, and they set the policy as a citizens board, a volunteer citizens board, for the Mobile Public Library. Our meeting room policy is what is at question here. It's a First Amendment right because we are what's called a limited public forum, because we are a government building. All groups have the right to use our meeting rooms if we are open to the public, and we open our meeting rooms to the public. And because of that, it's a First Amendment issue, we don't have a choice. Our policies are reviewed by council, and I did speak with city attorney Ricardo Woods about this, and he did agree in this instance that this is a First Amendment issue. I do appreciate everyone's sentiments and the right to have voice your concerns. That's what makes America great, and that's why we have the First Amendment and freedom of speech. It is a very difficult issue at hand here because it is very polarizing on both sides, but what it boils down to the library and the library board is we want our meeting rooms free and open to the public because they are paid for by tax dollars, and we want the most people to use them. We've had over 1,200 meeting room uses this year with over 16,000 people, almost 17,000 people using them this year alone. And that's just for outside groups. That's not counting any of the actual library programming that is done. And I do want to emphasize, this is an outside group that is presenting this program. It is not the library. We are not co-sponsoring it. We are not providing any funds to it other than the electrical of keeping the building open that would be open anyways because we're open on Saturdays anyways. I know that's tough for this group to hear, and I do, again, appreciate all your concerns, but for us, it is a free speech issue. If we let one group use the library, we let all groups use the library. We've had faith-based groups use the library in the past, and this year, we've had Bible studies. We've even had a church who started their church using our West Mobile meeting room every Sunday for almost seven months. So we are sensitive to everyone's needs, and that's all we're trying to be, is sensitive to everyone's needs. But it is hard because everyone does have differing opinions. And I would love to answer any questions that the council may have.
Any questions of Mr. Kenny? If not, no, no, any questions of the council? I'm sorry. Mr. Williams?
And thank you for coming down. It's, I realize that I think that many more than are here today share the same view that was so eloquently expressed earlier by the two speakers. But was there consult with legal? You said Mr. Ricardo Woods, and that's the mayor's counsel, that's city lead attorney. Did you seek his advice on how to proceed? Because you said that it was the board that set policy, but this is really not about policy, it's about law, isn't it?
Correct.
Okay.
And when we adopt a policy, all library policies, our entire policy manual goes under review, and that policy was reviewed by legal counsel at the time that it was adopted by the library board.
And I'm talking about recently, though.
Recently, I had a phone call from Ricardo Woods asking about the situation. We did discuss it, and he concurred what I thought, based off of our policy and conversations we had for developing our policy manual, that if we open our library meeting rooms to the public, we cannot discriminate against any group. We have to have it open for all.
Well, let's hear from Mr. Woods, with the administration.
So what I'll tell you is, what Mr. Kenny said is accurate. He told me what he thought, and I did not disagree. There was no review by the mayor's office. There was no legal counsel given to the library by the mayor's office or his chief counsel. And so, what I was concurring with him about was, one, that they had already made a decision, and we were talking after the fact, and also making sure that I was clear of two things. One, that the mayor's office had not been consulted at any time before this, and nor had the council, and this is a council-appointed board, and it is self-governing as far as the volunteer board is concerned. So we didn't do any review or give any legal opinion other than to agree and concur with what he said about it being a First Amendment issue.
And that is correct. This was an informal conversation. It was not a legal opinion. I knew that our policy had already been under legal review.
Any further questions?
I have a question.
Still, if I could continue with, maybe with a question to our council, and that is, does the city council of Mobile, even through a board, have the right to close a facility or deny access? If it is a public facility?
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Mrs. Rich?
The question, and I think you answered it about the church group that met out in West Mobile. I was vaguely familiar with that. And that's a real good thing.
Yes, it is.
That groups can meet, and also, they, it still has to be open to the public, though, but it's a choice that somebody makes.
Correct.
To attend those type of things that are, well, anything with the library is a choice. And I am sympathetic to residents who have a moral sense that this is not an ideal program for children, and I've read so many of letters that have come in and emails that have reached our offices. I'm sure all of us have as well. Federal law protects the freedom of speech, and were there any concerns about if you picked and chose groups that are not considered hate groups? Hate groups and people who promote violence, you're allowed to say, "Not under our roof." But if it's not considered hate speech, then you're able, you have to open your doors because they're opening it to the public, but it's the public's choice.
Correct.
To attend or to stay away from.
Right. There has to be, yes. I'm not an attorney.
Does that sound about right?
Miss Conker, you have to do that.
Well, first of all, let me say that a legal opinion is a formal document in writing based on a stated set of facts. So to the extent that the lawyers are having discussion here, everyone needs to understand that this is not a formal legal opinion. I haven't reviewed the policy. I haven't been presented with anything, but based on what I know right now, the library has a policy that meeting rooms are available for people to reserve, and that the library does not decide whether your purpose for using the meeting room is worthy or not. And I don't see how you could have any other policy because then you would have to have, I guess, a censorship board, and I don't think that's allowed. So, you know, it's a policy applied in a non-discriminatory manner, and it is subject to First Amendment. It is a limited public forum, which is a term of art in First Amendment jurisprudence. And so, I don't know, I haven't heard any solutions proposed, so it's kind of hard. I mean, if all that's being asked is for a personal opinion about whether you approve of this or not, I mean, that's different than saying we need to have a policy prohibiting people from talking about subjects that we don't want to hear about.
Mr. Davis?
I just have a statement. I don't have a question for Mr. Kenny.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kenny.
Mr. Vice President, and I would like to thank Mr. Kenny and everybody that's here today for being here to share with us their opinions on this matter. The Mobile Public Library has given permission to a third-party organization, Rainbow Mobile, to present a program called Drag Queen Story Hour at the library. The library is a public space maintained through public funds. Other than allowing the use of the space, the Mobile Public Library is not supporting the event, and taxpayer money is not going towards it. Attendance by the public is entirely voluntary. Rainbow Mobile, according to a library spokesman, met all the requirements the library has in place to hold the event. The question before us today is whether the Mobile City Council can or should take any action to prevent this presentation by Rainbow Mobile. After a long and bloody war against a powerful enemy had miraculously been won, and after the shortcomings of the Articles of Confederation had imposed themselves upon the victors, our founders set upon the task of creating a new government. They intentionally created a government of limited powers. But there were some who felt that the Constitution as finally drafted did not go far enough in protecting individual rights from infringement by the government. They proposed amendments to the Constitution ensuring these rights, first among them the right to free expression of opinions and ideas. These limitations on the power of the national government were made applicable to the states by virtue of the due process clause of the Fourteenth Amendment. Since that time, the United States Supreme Court has issued numerous opinions affirming the right of free speech against government action. For example, in 1989, in Texas v. Johnson, the court said, and I quote, "If there is a bedrock principle of the First Amendment, it is that the government may not prohibit the expression of an idea simply because society finds itself finds it offensive or disagreeable." Our founders understood that whenever government acts to limit speech, they do so with the stated purpose of protecting the people, when the real purpose is to quiet disturbing and irritating voices. It is only controversial, offensive, even immoral speech that requires protection. Our founders understood that the truth is most likely to emerge from a marketplace of ideas that is open and robust. Our founders understood that the quickest way to lose your own rights is to deny them to someone else. So, Mr. Vice President, I will not prevaricate or abandon the principles our founders fought and in many cases bled and died for. and in many cases bled and died for, those same principles men and women fight for today. Those who have spoken to us today have a constitutionally guaranteed right to speak to us in a public space, opposing the provision of public spaces for the Drag Queen Story Hour. They have a right to assemble peaceably on September 8th, to further voice that opposition. But this government has no more right to prevent Rainbow Mobile from exercising its First Amendment rights than we would have preventing those who are here today from exercising that same right. Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Mr. Richardson?
Yes, sir. Mr. Vice President. It seems, I agree with Reverend Wolf, that what's going to happen at the library is wrong, but it's not legally wrong. It's morally wrong. It's not legally wrong now, because there's nothing against, there is no law against reading to children. I don't care who has done the reading. There's no law, there's no statute against reading. So, we can't, we can't, the city can't get involved, because they're not breaking any If you're talking about lifestyles, you might, you might, you might attack the Mars. That's a failure of the church. The city, the city can't enforce Mars? We got these kids walking around with their pants on, we can't, we can't do nothing about that. If I told you a lie, the city can't arrest me for lying? I can lie whenever I get ready to lie. It's morally wrong to lie, because the Bible says, "Don't you dare bear false witnesses." It's in the Bible. There is a morally, morally wrong, there's a legal wrong. We can't enforce, you're asking the city to enforce what you believe to be is morally wrong. That's what the churches ought to be doing, to the purpose of preaching the gospel, to convert the heart of those that we believe to be morally wrong. Now, what, what could have happened? First of all, we're not in charge of children. There are no children report to the city. They live in the city. They report home to their parents. But legally, they must report to the school at age six through sixteen. Now, maybe another way would have been to contact the schools to notify their parents not to bring their kids to this event, but we are not in charge of kids. And we can't block anybody from coming. Few, a few, a couple of years ago, the Comic Cowboys had a parade down Public Freesia Center, Mobile. They had obscenity, had all kinds of stuff up there, denigrating our citizens. So, I came back to this body here to say, "Let's pass a law, because they're on city streets, and let's stop the Comic Cowboys from bringing, little children are standing out there, parents out there with the children with all of this stuff on these floats." Attorney gave us his legal opinion. It's guaranteed in the First Amendment of the United States. Freedom of speech and freedom of expression is guaranteed. And no state would vote for the Constitution until they put the Bill of Rights in. They would not, they would not vote for the U.S. Constitution as proposed until they had the Bill of Rights. And the first one, Article One, freedom of freaks, freedom of expression, and freedom of religion. Do you think the atheists want religious people up in the library? No! Do you think religious people want the atheist people in the library? Let me just say this, that the umbrella in this city has got to be big enough for all us to get under. I don't care if you're straight, gay, everybody got to get under the umbrella, because for more than 200 years, my ancestors couldn't get under that umbrella. And do you think I'm going to kick somebody from under the umbrella? I'm not going to do it. I just, we heard, Ms. Strong said her people came from Italy. The Mediterranean Sea separated Europe from Africa. Italy is on, Italy's on one end of the Mediterranean Sea, and Africa is on the other end of the Mediterranean Sea. And those people who came here from Africa could not get under the umbrella. And I'm not going to be quick to put anybody from under the umbrella. We got to live together. The Bible said, "Judge ye not that ye be not judged." And let me close with this one. In the inner circle, in Jesus' inner circle, it was 12 in the inner circle. And for three years, those 12 followed Jesus from neighborhood to neighborhood, community and community. One of them, Jesus described as the Son of addition. I want y'all to know what he was saying. This is a person that is evil inside and out, unregenerating, unsavageable. This is a person that's evil. He was talking about Judas. Do you think Jesus went and said, "I'm kicking Judas, the son of the devil, I'm kicking him On the night that Judas betrayed him, Matthew 26:50, when Judas betrayed Jesus, Jesus called him friend. Matthew 26:50. He could have said, "You low-down, back-baddie knife..." He didn't do that. He called him friend, and Judas' own conscience convicted himself, and he hung himself. So, you're asking the government to do what the church, the church is in charge of Mars. The Ten Commandments was given to Moses, not to the king. It was given to Moses, to God's people, the Christians. We are God's people. And the best we can do down here is spread the word, spread the truth, turn the light on so folk can know how to get home. That's the best we can do. And if they follow the darkness, we can't do nothing about it. We can't go arrest them, because they follow the darkness. And in the end, God will judge us all.
Ladies and gentlemen, we have heard some very touching sentiments, both from the individuals who've come to speak to us and from this council. And I have to say, I agree with exactly what my colleagues have said. There's, there's a moral wrong, and then there's breaking the law. And just like we have to open up these facilities to those who would have a religious function, we have to keep them open for those who would not. And while I agree, and I won't be there, that the best way to keep this from happening is to keep the children at home.
Right.
Let's just put that out there. If nobody shows up, and all of your kids are at home, a three- to an eight-year-old should be with their mother and father anyway. Keep the children at home, and then they won't see the Drag Queen, and they won't read the story. And so, I thank you all for coming. We don't have an opportunity, you had to sign in to speak, sir. I'm sorry. Everyone who wanted to speak, Pastor Wolf and Ms. Scott, Ms. Strong, pardon me, they had that opportunity. And Pastor Wolf, I highly respect you.
I do, too.
Both from your Cottage Hill days, and now at Luke 4:18. So, I don't want this to go as if we're disrespecting him or Mr. Strong. I don't disagree with your opinion, but the, but the law is open to everybody. And so, keep your children at home. If you don't want them influenced, keep them at home.
Give me a hand.
It is, but the leader...
Yes, sir. No, sir. No, sir. No, sir. You got to sign in. We're not going to have that.
It's not a community meeting.
Mr. Vice President, when Ms. Richardson's done, I'd like to make a comment, too.
Pardon me?
If Mr. Richardson's done, I would like to make a comment.
Ms. Williams, just a second.
I'd like to at least ask a request. I just wondered about the administration, and whether or not they were prepared for a peaceful protest at that location on that day at that time.
I didn't hear that question.
Are you prepared for a peaceful protest that day?
Prepared for a peaceful protest at that day at that time?
We'll make the proper arrangements as soon as, well, actually, we've started making arrangements already in anticipation, but we'll make sure that we're ready.
Thank you.
Any further comments from the council? If not, ma'am, city clerk?
Consent resolutions held over 6602, determining expenditure of discretionary funds for contribution to the McArthur Place Homeowners Association serves a public purpose and approved payment.
So moved.
Second.
There's been a call for, a roll call vote?
Hold on.
Let's let this, it's a good time, we can, we'll hear everybody.
Sure. Thank, thank all of you for coming. If you keep them at home, read the Bible story to them, say it time. You're good.
Why don't they protest? Why don't they go out? John had a good point. Why don't they go down to the library and protest?
I know.
Mr. Vice Chair, we have a motion and a second.
We have, it's been properly motioned and settled, and we do have a request.
Any counter, any suggestion?
In the discussion.
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Thank you very much. We spoke at length at pre-conference, and I do hope that this council will support this initiative in use of my discretionary funds, or the district's discretionary funds belongs to the citizens of Mobile by virtue of the office that I have in releasing them. And I see this as a very good public partnership with this neighborhood, and hope that you support it as well. Thank you.
Any further discussion? If not...
Ma'am clerk?
Ma'am clerk?
Vice Chair Manzi?
Aye.
Councilmember Richardson?
Aye.
Councilmember Small?
Aye.
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Abstain.
Councilmember Rich?
Yes.
Councilmember Gregory?
Aye.
So, this, a motion, this item passes with six in the eyes and one abstention.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
CIP resolutions held over 21603, authorized contract with Frank Turner Construction Company for 2016 CIP District One, Florida Street and Dawn Street drainage improvements.
So moved. Second.
Properly motioned and second, any discussion?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Richardson?
I'd like to say that for years, people living in this section of Dawn Street and Florida Street have been suffering from flooding, and we've had businesses to leave, we got some draining to leave, and this is going to bring great relief to those citizens in this area that is coming to fruition.
Any further discussion? If not...
Vice Chair Manzi?
Aye.
Councilmember Richardson?
Aye.
Councilmember Small?
Aye.
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Rich?
Aye.
Councilmember Gregory?
Aye.
This item passes seven with no abstention.
Resolutions held over. There's no objection. I'll take all of these at once. Zero, nine...
Well, you can, but I'm on 210606. I need to amend that one.
Okay. Resolution 09604 and 605 are reallocating monies from CEP to fire department, for fire department of vehicles, rescue trucks.
So moved.
Second.
Properly motioned and second, any discussion?
It's on both of them?
Yes, it's both.
Okay.
If not, Ms. Richardson?
Councilmember Manzi?
Aye.
I'm sorry, Council Vice Chair. Councilmember Richardson?
Aye.
Councilmember Small?
Aye.
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Rich?
Yes.
Councilmember Gregory?
Aye.
Item spares seven zero.
21606, authorized professional services contract with Wilkins Miller to provide audit services for fiscal years 2018, 2019, and 2020, with the option to renew for fiscal years 2021 and 22.
So moved.
Second.
The proper motion is second, any discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, I would like to offer an amendment to 21606, to say that the contractor shall present an audit report at a public meeting of the Mobile City Council.
I second.
I'm going to pass, make sure they have the right.
Yes, sir. There's been an amendment made, it's been motioned and settled, any discussion?
I have a question about the amendment. I understand the amendment to require that the auditor, once the audit is complete, once the caffer is complete, will come down to a regular meeting of the Mobile City Council and present it to the city council.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions regarding the amendment? So, the amendment's been motioned and settled, and we have a discussion, any other discussion? And we're going to vote on the amendment. All those in favor?
Vice Chair Manzi?
Aye.
Councilmember Richardson?
Aye.
Councilmember Small?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Rich?
Yes.
Councilmember Gregory?
Aye.
So, the amendment passes. Now, we're going to go back to the original motion?
As amended.
As, as we've already motioned, as amended? Yes, ma'am.
Vice Chair Manzi?
Aye.
Councilmember Richardson?
Aye.
Councilmember Small?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Rich?
Yes.
Councilmember Gregory?
Aye.
All right. So, the item passes as amended.
Yes.
21607, authorized contract with Axon Enterprise for MPD body camera equipment. So moved.
Second.
Properly motioned and second, any discussion? If not, ma'am, city clerk?
Vice Chair Manzi?
Aye.
Councilmember Richardson?
Aye.
Councilmember Small?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Rich?
Yes.
Councilmember Gregory?
Yes.
Item passes.
Consent resolution is being introduced for the first time, 37611 through 6626.
Motion for the suspension of rules for immediate consideration of revolution is 37611 through 60616.
Second.
It's been properly motioned and second, is there any discussion? If not, ma'am, city clerk?
Can we dispense with that for the motion?
Take them all together.
Yeah, I'm going to take them all.
Yeah.
Yep.
But you're calling...
We got to approve.
We don't need a roll call for the suspending of the rules, right?
Yes.
You don't want, you just want for the items.
That's right.
Just for the items.
Adams 1522.
So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. 37611, recommend approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a retail beer table wine offering is only licensed for cost plus rural market on Airport Boulevard. 4612 declare, and 4612, 13 and 14 declaring structures at 2503 Chestang Avenue, 928 Lincoln Avenue, 358 Robin Street, public nuisances and ordering them demolished. 6615 and 616 are approved and award a special bonus for firefighters of the month as part of the mayor's incentive program, Patrick Henderson and Maurice Valtier. And 6626, determining expenditure of discretionary funds for contribution to the Tomerville Crichton Community Development Corporation serves a public purpose and approved payment.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
But probably motioned and second, any discussion on these items?
Second.
Proper motion and second, any discussion? If not...
On procedural things, we'll just go as standard.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item spares.
21617 authorized contract with Goodwood Mills in Kwood for Kid Park Drainage Improvement Design Services. 21618 authorized contract with Net Connection for Hillsdale Park netting replacement.
So moved. Second.
Proper motion and second, any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Not in favor. On procedural things, we'll just go as standard.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item spares.
21617 authorized contract with Goodwood Mills in Kwood for Kid Park Drainage Improvement Design Services. 21618 authorized contract with Net Connection for Hillsdale Park netting replacement.
So moved. Second.
Proper motion and second, any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Vice Chair Manzi?
Aye.
Councilmember Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Small?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Daves?
Yes.
Councilmember Rich?
Yes.
Councilmember Gregory?
Yes.
Resolutions being introduced for the first time, 09619 through 37623.
Our council receives the resolution and lay it off for one week.
Public call for public hearings. 41624, call for public hearing to rezone property at 5803, 5807, 5811, and 5812 Walkman Lane, southeast corner of Walkman Lane, private road and Long Street from R1 to R3 scheduled September 25th. This public hearing, we need to postpone. We need to lay this over. There has to be some rewording.
Time, is that time taken?
Thank you.
How long we need to lay it off? Most of the level for one week.
Second.
Proper motion and second, any discussion? Now, Mr. Rich?
For public knowledge, this containing... This rezoning going from R1 to R3 is for student housing, and it contains a planned unit development, which is not a condition of the rezoning, but there are concerns if it's not advertised as a condition, then the property would just be rezoned to R3 if that planned unit development was not actually constructed. So to get that, so that the applicant does not have to return to the planning commission, this will be streamlining it for them. And I've met with them and talked with them. So they're acutely aware of this, and they are planning to build the PUD. It's just nice to tie it to the rezoning. That's the comfort level you have. Thank you.
Any other discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
41625, call for public hearing to rezone property at 556, 566, 576, and 600 Ziegler Circle East and 7331 Ziegler Circle South, southeast corner of Ziegler Circle East and Sellers Lane from B3 to I1 scheduled September 25th.
So moved. Second.
Proper motion and second, any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing is called.
Announcements. The public hearing on the proposed budget is scheduled for September 4th during the 10:30 city council meeting.
Mr. Williams? No thing. Mr. Small?
Thank you, Vice President. Manzi, I would like to remind all the citizens, I've been receiving several phone calls within the past week about overgrown grass. When you call the council office, the council still will have to follow up the process of calling the issue or directing the issue to 311. Just asking all the residents, you know, you can call me, but I still will have to reach out to 311 myself to report the issue. But if you have overgrown grass blighted properties in your neighborhood nearby you, please dial 311. If your cell phone does not dial 311, dial 208-5311. Again, it's not the council that address those issues. Those issues are addressed by the mayor's office. And again, you can call me, but you're slowing down the process. Just go ahead and call 311 and also get your SRO number, which stands for service request order number. They help to keep up with the tracking of your city issue. And again, if you experience an overgrown grass blighted properties in your neighborhood, please report it to 311, and also remember to get you a SRO number. And I'd like to wish all the citizens of District 3 and the city of Mobile a happy and a safe Labor Day on this coming weekend. Thank you, Vice President Manzi.
Thank you. Councilman Small, Councilman Williams, any announcements? Councilman Richardson?
Yes, I would like to follow up with Councilman Small's announcement, because oftentimes a reason our citizens call the city council's number because they didn't get their issue resolved through 311. And they believe that the appeal is through the council. We don't have any authority over 311. If you can't get any satisfaction from 311, dial the mayor's office 208-7800, because he's in charge of it. It's nothing we can do. We have to do the same thing you do, turn it into the administration. So the appeal is to the mayor, it's not to us. But I would like to announce that on September 15th, the new basketball court at Figures Park will be open. This basketball court was funded by our NBA star from Mobile, Demarcus Cousin, who will be there on the 15th. We're going to have a street party that the public will be invited to on the 15th. So we're going to open up the basketball court on 15th, and we're going to have a good time in the streets on 15th. The public is invited to come to the opening of the basketball court. It's going to be the second court in District 1. We got one at Sage Avenue. And this one is going to be built on a different style. I've been over there to look at it. It's similar to the one at Sage, but what it is made out of, it's made to last for a long time. They're using steel. We're not worried about anybody knocking it, go down, doing any damages over there because it's going to be made out of special material that is supposed to last for a long time. Also like to announce that I will be holding my Toven... Holding my Tovenville Community Meeting on Thursday, September 20th in the Tovenville Library. And that meeting will start at 6 o'clock, asking all the citizens in Tovenville, the police come out and meet with us. At all my meetings, the number one issue is going to be jobs. Unemployment in District 1 is about 12%, where it's about 5% in the city. So we'll probably double it more, and unemployment is doubling District 1. So I work hard to try to bring venues that's going to create jobs to District 1. So we're going to have people coming, talking about jobs. Several presenters will be at our meeting. So those looking for some tips about jobs, you need to come out. We're going to talk about our CIP projects that's coming on board. We're going to have a police chief to be there to talk about public safety updates. And then the captain of the precinct is going to give us the crime report, and I can give you the result of the crime report now. Precinct 3 is the safest precinct in City of Mobile. And if that's not true, they're lying to us with the figures they're giving to us. Okay, so that will be a time for the citizens to express themselves, to say whatever it is they want to say. We're going to be open to listening, to listening to them. I will be giving any updates and any announcements that is germane to the community. I'll be making those announcements. As always, we have a great meeting at Tovenville. We're looking forward to having a great meeting this time to see all of you at 6 o'clock on Thursday, September 20th. Thank you.
Mr. Daves?
No announcements.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes, thank you. It's nice that we announced the public hearing for residents to come down and address us on the budget for next week, and I will certainly put a link in the newsletter. And I'm not sure, I haven't verified this, but I hope that it's also on the city's webpage, our proposed budget. So if someone in the clerk's office could call to the administration to be sure that there is a link to the city's budget. I did have somebody tell me last week it was not up, but that would be great. Thank you.
Mrs. Gregory?
No, thank you.
Thank you. I want to, by way of announcement, acknowledge our councilman, not councilman, Pastor Leon Bell Jr. He's the newly installed pastor of one of our prominent churches in District 2 and the city of Mobile, the St. Joseph Missionary Baptist Church of Mobile. And we appreciate him being here today, and I hopefully he'll allow us to have our upcoming community meeting for that area at St. Joseph. We'd like to have him in the churches to keep that connection going. I appreciate all of the hard work of the administration relative to our budget. We've got our first hearing on September 4th. I know there are several items and several initiatives that individual council members are going to want to work on relative to this budget, and I ask if that's your intention, let's go ahead and get that started so that we can hopefully adopt the budget in a timely manner. Citizens of District 2, as I often say, I'm at your disposal, 509-4239. We'll have a series of three community meetings in September. Ms. Fallon is not in here, but I'll work with her to get those dates out so that we can meet. We want to have those meetings at times where the pertinent city officials can be there because as both of my colleagues to my right have said, we don't instruct or give direction to city employees. We have one employee, Ms. Lambeau, you raise your hand. That's the one employee that we have, but we get all of the calls, when really those calls ought to go to 311, and after not receiving a response there, you really ought to contact the mayor's office because the mayor is in control and has purview over all of those other employees. And so I don't mind being a conduit. You can contact me. I don't mind being an advocate, but I cannot give direction. And I just want to make certain that I say that on a regular basis because sometimes we have unrealistic expectation. Any other comments?
Yes, only because it was pointed out, the annual new budget for 2019 is on the city's front page of the website. So that's another way for citizens to review it prior to them coming down and addressing us. It is there. Thank you.
And I'm sure we'll have more than just this one hearing. I guarantee you we'll have more than just the one here on September 4th. I believe we'll need more than one. Any other comment?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Well, that's what I mean.
But the public hearing for the citizens...
September the 4th. Official public hearing is September the 4th. The budget is on the website, and so go and read it and offer us your opinion if you cannot be here in person on September 4th. Any further...
Mr. Chairman, I just want to make it known that Pastor Bell lives in District 1, and we just let you have him over there to preach, but when he finishes preaching, he comes back to District 1. Just want to get that straight.
President Manzi?
Yes, sir.
Vice President, I thought that Pastor Bell was the newly elected pastor of St. Joseph Preacher.
Oh, no, sir. No, sir. No vacance is there.
But I would like to extend congratulations to my colleague, and I believe that he should be installed soon, and I plan on being there to celebrate your installation at St. Joseph Preacher.
I appreciate that. One correction, it's St. Joseph Whistler.
It's all the same thing, brother.
Yes, sir. Just want to let y'all know that.
Mr. Vice President, I'd also like to welcome Pastor Bell for being here today. I think you picked an unusual day to attend, but I'm... But it was great having you here.
Any... Do I hear a motion? Proper motion and second, any discussion? Do we need a roll call?
No.
I think we need a roll call. Give us a roll call, ma'am city clerk. I'm ready.
Vice Chairman?
Aye.
Nay.
Councilmember Small? Councilmember Daves? Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Rich?
Yes.
Councilmember Gregory?
Yes.
Please head upstairs. The chamber is waiting on to do the briefing as you are.
Oh, okay. Me the chair.